So let's open our meeting at 6:34. First thing, this is a virtual meeting. That would be in combination partly in person, partly via teleconference. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of the virtual meeting. Also move on. Do we hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? In favor, roll call.
Sean, aye.
Marilyn, are you there? Doctor, she...
It's a little bit hard to hear Norm, it's like he's muffled.
Well, I'm gonna take my mask off, how's that?
Oh, much better.
Marilyn can't hear you.
She is here, um, let me ask her to unmute.
See you guys, now what?
Okay, now I can.
Okay. Unmuted by host, it says, so...
Okay. Okay, we're hearing a roll call vote on waiving the reading of the remote guidelines. Okay, we have a motion, a second, we have one, aye. Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
One and some aye. Okay, minutes. We have the minutes of July 14th meeting.
I, uh... I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
I won't, so move.
Marilyn, you may second it.
Hmm?
So you may, you second it.
I'll second that, do you need a second?
Well, Dick moved it.
Oh, I really, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, roll call again. Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm? Aye. Okay. Uh, I'm gonna say we have no invoices. Uh, we do have some correspondence from Town Council, but I think that will be probably brought up a little bit later here. So, um, A and R, Westley side of Welch Ave. Uh, this is an application by Mr. and Mrs. Bessie.
Yep.
To create more lots on one side of Welch Ave. Um, it appears that they do have sufficient area, and by the numbers anyway, sufficient frontage. So Dick?
However, I, I have a problem here because on Lot 4, on the upper part of the, um, drawing, there's not a sufficient enough frontage. If you'll notice, it goes up and around and all the way down to the bottom, to the corner, where the 200 feet is. And, um, I have a problem because it's, that's the swamp area, and I am under the impression if you cannot put a driveway over the area, that you can't classify it as frontage, you know, for a usable frontage. And to me, you know, I, I look at this, this is all drawn out. Why? They have not come up with other ideas.
It, it's not for us to guess.
I know, I know, but, uh, this, this thing here, I, I would like a real good classification or, uh, somebody to look it over and come back to me and says, yes or no.
I, I have a question. Uh, Lot 1, is Lot 2 is inside of Lot 1? Would, would that, would that, um, be categorized as illusory? The way that's shaped, to surround it like that? I know we, we don't exactly have a, a bylaw on, uh, trucks, like, the way the lot's shaped, but, I mean, kinda, 'cause... I don't know. I mean, if it's allowed, I'm okay with it. I just got questioned that being inside of another lot, like...
If the frontage is on a curve or a corner, then the frontage is measured at the setback line.
Okay.
And that's what the dotted line on the plan is showing.
Okay.
So that one's okay?
Alright then.
Okay, I guess, big question here is how do we resolve Lot 4, uh, on this? And, uh, we do have a correspondence in your packet, this is, uh, assuming from Town Council.
Yeah, and what you have there is the, a prior write-up for A and Rs. It, it's derived from Town Council advice. It's advisory to the board, it talks about access to the lots.
Yeah.
And how to do that as a test, to make sure that there is sufficient access to the lot over the frontage portion of the lot.
Uh, at least to me, in the, in this whole thing, the key is in, actually, I guess I'll call it the third paragraph down. The fact that is, "To endorse an A and R plan, the planning board during the A and R process must determine, one, that the frontage meets the dimensional requirement of the zoning bylaw," which dimensionally it does.
Correct.
Um... Don't, don't, don't. "And two, the frontage provides practical vehicular access to the principal building lot, building on a lot for residents, delivery services, fire, police, and other emergency services."
So, are they referring to, because of the 200-foot frontage, that is the frontage?
This is what they are claiming, is giving them their frontage.
So, then the frontage provides particular vehicle access to the principal.
So, my other question on this one would be, is any of this property, London says, I'm missing an arbitrarily set, from here to here, does any of that property hang around?
Now, I, I thought we were trying to get away from these type of design properties. We're stretching, stretching across three different properties, just to gain the, the amount of land. I mean, it was the whole thing, what we went through with Julian, and why we stopped this.
And right now, what we're trying to determine is, I, I guess very, very particularly, for all of the studies we did, are they showing what is called illusory frontage? Meaning, frontage that really has no practical access. And for the information that I see here, I don't think we can determine.
Well, I mean, I did have a map. Let me just see if everybody wants to log in here from the outside. Somebody wants to log in, so, we did look for a map, this is the map. This is a DEP wetlands map. I can also show you the photo, of the base map as a photo, if that helps to determine anything. I'll turn this off. What you see is a lot of trees. Uh, I don't, I don't know that this is conclusive one way or the other. This is what it looks like in the aerial photograph. Um, just because you have a DEP wetlands layer, that doesn't mean that you don't have access to the sites in that portion.
You know, that you can't tell visually this way, you know? Is it, is it wetlands? You can't tell by soil condition, like ConCon does soils and/or vegetation, so...
Sorry I'm late, uh, bored, I'm driving back from my job site.
Hi, Tim.
Hello, sorry, I'm just, uh, driving, I haven't, I'm in Holden right now.
Okay.
Are we on the A and R?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Is this the one that looks like a U that David sent in the package?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, I thought we said we weren't gonna do those ever again.
Yeah, yes and no.
Okay, I thought we put something on the website saying that, uh, that's off the table from now on, about a year ago.
Well, it's a question of what's off the table. And... If the, the 200 feet on the left side of this plan for that Lot 1, with that 200 feet of frontage, if it does provide reasonable access to the property, then it's not illusory frontage. If it doesn't supply access, then certainly we, I guess, could determine that it is illusory.
Okay.
And one of the things, I don't know if you, uh, read that Dave sent out, was something from?
Yep, I did.
And in the, like, the second or third paragraph? Um, what the heck was it, did you read that?
Was that talking about the driveway access to the property?
Correct.
Yeah, I read that.
Alright. And I'm saying that, that's, that's wetlands down there.
Yeah, because that's that blue line that, uh, Dave sent us that GIS map, and I, I opened, I went in and logged in, looked at that, and saw where the, what is, not the wetlands, but the, uh, the watershed area was. It crosses, and, and I could be off on my number, like 60% of the property?
It's a good, good path of it, yes. And you can't, I mean, their determination isn't exact or precise, it is...
Sorry, that's the dinging of the, I should be wearing a seatbelt. I, I just, I looked at the U, and I said, I thought we had said, "No more", and I guess I was being, I guess I was being firm in it, is what I was saying, on that last one on Campbell Street. We allowed that, and then we put the letter out indicating that, uh, that's it.
So... In, in that case, those lots that were created over on, uh...
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, Norm. I just, my, my trouble spot is, is to Dick's point, if, if the access is in a wetlands and there's no way to get in, um, then it's illusory, isn't it?
Yes, and, you know, those lots at that time, there's no doubt, there, there was no way to use that frontage.
Yeah, yeah.
My money right now, we cannot determine whether they can access this lot through that 200-foot frontage.
Is it, is it outside our power to request a determination? I mean, we've got, don't we have 60 days on an A and R, or is it 45?
21.
21.
You can't just ticket on this, you would not make that by the next meeting, and the applicant's not here to, to continue it.
Well, we've got 21 days, when did it come in? Two days ago?
No, it came in on June, uh, July 15th.
Oh, boy. This is back just in the corner. So 21 days is, yeah...
We need to check.
Yeah, um...
It has to come to us, not, not Town Council.
I, I, I don't have an answer for this one, 'cause I, what I was gonna suggest is if we have the time is, try to be able to make a decision by getting some input from the ConCon. I mean, they don't have to rule on this, but they can at least give us input. I mean, otherwise, aren't we just shooting in the dark by approving this?
Well, to me, I would like to have a thing from Amy, maybe saying, yes, this, this is part of, uh, and, and then leave it up to the, um, e- either Bonnie or Julian to withdraw it, and go back and have it tested, or whatever they gotta do to prove or unprove it, or one or another.
Would, so we would like, give Amy a couple bullet items that we're asking questions on, and, and ask for her to get back to us? Through David?
If I could, just up in on this, Town Council's gonna want precise information. I mean, her, her advice is, is here, I think the advice you're looking for is whether or not there's any real wetlands that bar immediate physical direct access to the frontage portion of the lot.
Exactly.
Which Town Council's not gonna have that, they've made their opinion.
And Town Council's not gonna find that.
Correct.
No, but she will say then, it must go back. At least he would have a ruling, you know, other than that, if we say we're denying this whole thing, you know? I just wanna be on the safe side and doing this.
But I'm not sure what Town Council's at this point for this.
I, I'm with Dick on this, if, if I deny something, I better have a good reason for denying it. And, and this is my opinion, at this point, I don't have enough information to make a decision. Am I wrong, or, or am I outside my bounds? I, I, I guess I'm asking the, the board.
That's the catch 22.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's the problem I've got right now, it's like, the ConCons is not in our purview, but if, if, if it doesn't follow Mass General law by having accessibility, we have a reason to deny, but if we don't know that, how do we deny?
The best information we have at this point is the maps that show, the photo of the site. Uh, this is the remote corner of the site, uh, someone zoomed out. You know, I'm not, I don't know, I, I can't make a determination as to what that is, whether there's underlying swamp condition, or whether that is just trees, that could be...
And I'm going by, 'cause right down there, we used to go down there quite frequently when I was on a ConCon, and I mean frequently, and...
Dick, excuse me for interrupting, Sean just sent me a message, I guess he got kicked out and he's trying to get back in.
I am letting him in now, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I dropped my tech, guys. Bad internet. Hello?
Yep, good.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize.
This is a little bit off the subject. But can we endorse part of the deal?
Not in this case, because everything's still in the plan. You're asking to take it as a whole or not at all, even if some of the lots comply?
Let, let me ask a question, are you guys, and I apologize, I'm off subject too, are you guys at the library, or is everybody on Zoom? No, uh, three of us are at the library. Okay, well, I'm leaving my driveway, and I apologize for the, uh, the sweat, but I, I, by the time I get my computer up and running, it'll be a half an hour or so, and I can be in the library in three minutes.
Come on up.
I'm heading that way right now, I'll sit in the far corner so you don't have to smell nine hours of being in 97-degree heat.
Plenty of social distance, believe me.
Yeah, I'll, this will be not social, it'll be smell distance.
Tim, I guess I'm glad I'm on Zoom then.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, I've been in Hudson all day with a gas crew, and, uh, I just threw on some shorts, 'cause the rest of clothes, you don't wanna even be near.
No issue with respect to Lot 4?
I, I, I mean, my perspective on this, to the board, I, I don't know what to do, 'cause part of me says that, you know, it's approvable, but the other part is I don't have enough information to, to, to call it illusory, so, you know, it's... And I hate just sending something through without having all the information.
Yeah, I... I, I agree with Tim, it... I mean, it's, it's not as, uh, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, a- as obvious as some of the builders have done in this town, but these long strips of, I mean, what is, I can't even see how wide that is, of property lines, it's just, I just thought it was something we were trying to get away from.
Well, just remember, we, we cannot deny an A and R just because we don't like the shape of a piece of property.
No, I underst- I understand that, I do.
But Sean, to your point, that's why we, we pulled out the, the A and R guidebook from Massachusetts to use.
Yeah, and it did not answer this question for us.
No, 'cause Norm, it's case by case, that's the problem, there's no black and white answer to this.
And see, and my only, my only problem is, how far do we, like, do we go? If, if, can other builders come in and say, "Well, since we did allow this one", you know, I just, it seems like we're kinda stuck in a rock and hard place, that's how I feel, I feel like I'm torn.
You're talking about Sean, the old precedence philosophy.
Yeah.
There were plenty of those in the past.
Yeah, that's the thing though, and then we put a, that time with Julian, we put a stop to these type of, uh, the properties, dude. I just... I'm torn, you know, I, I feel...
See, this is the... That's correct.
My other question is, is possibly, let's say, from here out to here, not?
Yes. I mean, just, I can look at the map.
And I'll, I'll say again...
The weapons are back here.
Uh, they come right around the corner.
'Cause there would be room before the house.
You can see it right there?
So, do you have the map, do you have the wetland mapping?
I have the map, I have the, uh, DEP wetlands map right here, and I have the aerial footage.
I, I wish we could see you guys exactly what you're pointing to.
Well...
Right, this all, wet, all the way up. Soaking in that. Yeah, this is the second set of course.
This is down at the bottom of the, the hill, right there.
Okay, I was, oh, I was looking at, no, no, are you sure it's over here? I thought it was this property.
These two, those two parcels are in play, because they're commonly owned.
That's the U, right, that they're making?
Yeah, these lots are commonly owned. So that, these are all by the state that these are.
And they're leaving this discussion. Okay, so, so there, so, so this plan crosses these two?
Correct.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
I think for the public's benefit...
For the record, Peter Crane Nate's way, Chair of Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
But I've been listening in the other room to this discussion, I thought I should get current ConCon perspective on it. Um, so, it goes all the way... So the edge of the new property line...
This is down here, this is the...
Is this line down here, which is, which abuts all of these little properties along Cedar Ave, right?
Correct.
The whole thinker goes that far down, Cedar Ave?
It might.
Well, no, no, it's, 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 it abuts the properties that are on Cedar, it does. Yeah.
It's had, had to tell with it, with a...
Right, now, I looked at two different map systems. One is this one that you're looking at, which is Mass Gis, and the other one that I've been looking at is from the Oliver system, which actually, they do vary in wetland designation, but these two maps, one-on-one on this, on this property, which, it doesn't mean that it is wetlands, which is the problem you're raising, but I know that if, if this, if someone were to try to put a house anywhere on that, on the bottom part of that property, if you will, I would require an NOI to prove that they are not near wetlands. Or, I should say, a wetland mapping from a wetland scientist.
Uh, Peter, can you point the mouse to where, where you're, what you're looking at?
Down here.
Okay.
Which is where it, as near as I can tell, yes, based on the map, so, this is Lot 4. So Lot, it's really Lot 4 frontage here, followed by?
Lot 3.
Lot 1 frontage here.
Correct.
And then up to 2, back to 3, to the extent property on Azalea Way, and back to 4, so...
Wow.
And all the green area, if I may, the green area is all wetland, right?
It sure looks that way, that is, that is the decision that the current DCR believes, based not on ground conditions, but on aerial maps.
Okay, so they could go out and do a determinate?
It doesn't reflect reality.
Oh, I, I get that, but...
Any unknown is the quality of the wetlands, whether or not you could actually physically build without having to do crossings. We don't know that based upon this map.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what would take a wetland scientist to delineate, and we don't have that kind of time, and I...
That's my struggle.
I don't know that, that, that the applicant has gone that far in their, in their thinking to actually put a house in a particular spot, and therefore to actually do the mapping. If they did the mapping, it would make it much easier for you all to be able to say that, that this frontage is illusory or not. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have strict, good, firm answers that say, "We can say with certainty, yes", or "no", or, "We just don't have that information for it".
I don't know what we have with LP.
Yeah. Yeah, Peter, 'cause my problem is, Lot 2 and 3, I have no issues with. It's 1 and 4 that I basically have saying, "No". We, we've been down this town more times than not, and the answer's "No". And I, and I thought we made it clear, not, I'm not saying this specifically, but we made it clear when we put it on the web that, "Guys, this decision that we did with Julian's it, we need clear-cut lot, not with these 10-foot little, or these spaces in the back", and, and coming up with frontage on two different sections of the road. a- and coming up with frontage on two different sections of the road", we said, "No more". And, and I thought the A and R guidebook gave us case law to be able to back that up, and that's where David, where Dick was talking about, we didn't ask Amy that, we just asked her a general question about...
But the, the question is whether or not there's actual real physical access to the frontage portion of the lot, that is a determining factor. That is the advice that was given previously. So the question is, what is the condition of the piece of land being shown on the wetlands map? Is it such that you could, you would have to get a wetlands crossing to access the rest of the lot? Or is it such, it's simply a matter of clearing trees to access the lot? If it's simply a matter of clearing the trees, then you would have actual physical access to the lot because you don't have to get the wetlands crossings involved. That's the unknown at this point, we do not know this from a visual inspection, or the maps, or the other information that, where Peter is providing.
And, and see, my problem is, the frontage for Lot One and Three, I'm gathering is in the wetland, was considered possibly the wetlands area. Because that's where they've got their two hun- that's where they're having their setback for the frontage for Lot One, and then Lot Four, their two-hundred-foot frontage, is... You know, my, my problem with Lot Four is, the two-hundred-foot frontage is down what I would consider the wetlands, and then it has a little over a hundred feet over in what I would consider an illusory lot, down the way. So, the majority of the frontage is down in the wetlands, that's why I didn't like this plan. Again, Two and Three, I have no issues with. And that's to your point, Norm, we can't approve partial A and Rs, so, again...
Endorse.
Yeah, endorse, I'm sorry, I, I keep using the word, endorse.
Yeah.
That's why I'm struggling when I, when I got this back from you, Dan, like, two of the lots are, I consider, wetlands and illusory, and the other two are fine, how the heck do we handle this with the board?
Well, you can't break it apart.
I know, so...
So...
I, I don't want to...
I, I just don't have a ruling from our town council.
Well, could we, could we do something to go back to the applicant in a response? And say, "The board feels that, you know, Lot Two and Three conform to an A and R standard, but can you, can you do something with One and Four?"
You know, we, we can send information.
And...
But basically, we're at a time...
I can't hear!
...a decision.
And Norm, pull the microphone closer to you, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, there has to be a decision, a- and this raises to me something that just, I don't know, for years I was under misinformation, I think. Can we deny an A and R plan?
We cannot endorse it.
Yes, what you would be determining is that it needs the full subdivision approval.
Is that the only reason?
Well, you believe that there is not sufficient real and practical access on some of the lots, and that indicates that you need a full subdivision, which means that you do not endorse the A and R because it lacks sufficient frontage, in essence. It lacks sufficient frontage for the reason, not of the physical distance, but for the lack of access.
My, my, my concern is, and again, I just, I just don't have absolute clarity on this, is that if we simply, if we fail to do anything on this tonight, it's constructively approved.
Correct.
Does, can we do a denial that prevents that constructive approval?
Yes, you would have to have a state a reason for why this plan is not endorable, and then letters have to be sent to the property owner. It has to be recorded with the town clerk's office of the board's vote for the reason the board voted it, which would be that the subdivision is necessary. So, it, uh, the, we'd have to formalize that in a letter.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not advocating this, but...
Norm, you went down the thought process where I was going, so...
That, that is, it appears, an option of simply, that is simply telling them, "Go back to the, go back to the drawing board. Come up with a better plan."
A- and I'm in a hundred and ten percent agreement with that.
Like I say, I'm not advocating, I'm just...
No, no.
Mr. Chair, if I may, there may be one other option, which is obnoxious for everyone in the room, I don't deny that, but that is to call, you have until next Wednesday to render a decision, is that correct? Do I, by timeline, this came on the fifteenth? Having a special meeting to just deal with this issue to give you time to get more information from the applicant. That's an option to you, I, I'm not saying it's the right thing to do either, I'm just...
Well, let me...
The easiest approach is certainly, I believe, to either approve or deny tonight. But short of that...
Could we, Norm, could we deny, but part of the, the motion for denying is inform- How do I do this? This is what I wanted to do last night, the select board, they didn't do it. You, you come up with a motion to deny, but you're leaving the door open for the applicant to, um, get us more information so we could have a, so we could rescind the denial, is that something I'm trying to say?
No, what you're talking about is really can it amount to a continuance?
Yeah.
If you'd like to go down that road. If you continue at this point, you have to continue it to a time that does not exceed the twenty-one days, otherwise you have a constructive grant issue.
Yeah.
Therefore, I...
I, 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 through, through you, Norm, my suggestion is, to be fair to the applicant, which is what I want to do, I think we need to put a letter together and say, "Listen, at this point, we're hinging on denial, but we'd like to have you take a look at this and possibly think to redo it, come up with a better solution", because, a- and again, this is my opinion, Lot Four and Lot One seem to be in, uh, wetlands, and it doesn't look like it's accessible to the lots, I guess is what I'm looking for, the word. And maybe we don't need to say that, maybe that's too much information, maybe it's just, instead of denying you in this meeting, we'll do a special meeting, but we want you to, you know, take a look at this and see if you can come up with a better plan, or extend us, so you don't back us into a corner, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Or alternatively, the applicant may persuade the board that there's no issue.
Yes, yeah, I'm fine with that too, but I, right now, I feel like I'm the dog in the corner painted in, and I have no choices. And I, I, in, in my heart, I can't approve this. Like, all right, I'm sorry, Sean will get me, endorse, I can't endorse this.
Who else want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'm done talking.
Sean, Marilyn?
I, I agree with, with Tim, I, you know, I'm the one that kind of started this conversation, so... I'm kind of surprised the planner, I mean, the New England environmental... I mean, that they're trying to not pull something off like this, but, that, okay, careful, um... They were here to even answer some questions, I don't know.
So...
So what? The, uh, second choice with the special meeting, how would that be worded?
Okay, that, well, that's what I was gonna kind of bring up. Yeah, for, you know, for example, if we send a correspondence out to the applicant, then what happens if we don't hear back from them?
Right. We'll have to have a special meeting to deny them.
We, we would have to.
Yeah. I think we should set it no matter what, and if we have to cancel it, we cancel it.
Because it always bring the plan back to us, correct? If we, if we do not endorse this plan, they, so, of course, do they have?
Dave, they can resubmit and it'll start the clock over?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I make a motion not to endorse this plan.
Okay, I, are you saying a motion to deny the plan?
Well, I think the determination would be that this plan's unendorseable because...
Yeah, not, not to not endorse it.
This is my opinion. I, I want to, you know, I guess I'm trying to help the applicant, but follow what I believe is correct, that's why I want to give them an opportunity. And we have email, I mean, we can send an email followed up by an official letter to get this plan rolling, but I, I believe the correct action, again, is get them correspondence that we're having trouble endorsing this plan because of wetlands, the way it's laid out, and we'd like the, the applicant and the developer to take a hard look at this, and, and have a meeting on Tuesday of next week, a special meeting, to specifically discuss this only. Can we do that?
What's next, Tuesday?
Uh, the Fourth, oh crap, I'm gonna be at M I T, oh Jesus. Can we do Monday?
Well, if I may to the chair, there was, uh, a motion on the, on the floor.
We're trying to, you know, trying to figure this thing out.
Trying to, Sean, trying to think if I want to second it or not, because I, I don't want to deny this, but...
You could always bring it back, right? You could always resubmit. And hopefully this time, we can get more information and more discussion about the unknowns.
Yeah, just... Dave, any thoughts?
I think the options are out there, the option is to not endorse it for a reason stated. To endorse it under some rationale that there's actual front, that has actual access to the lots, or that even if it's strictly not access to all the lots, it's not really substantial because it's going to be clear where the driveways are for each of these lots, and they're close enough, such that that may be flexible in terms of a reading. Or to have a continuance, to ask for the applicant to disprove that there's no real physical practical access to the lots, One and, uh, Four.
Okay, then, if I may to the chair, uh, I withdraw my motion and then make a motion to continue this.
Second. Phil?
Next Tuesday, if that's possible?
Can I, can I talk you, Sean, into the Third on Monday?
That's fine.
I know this is Tuesday, only give them three days. But...
Not a lot.
No, I know.
Could we all request an extension from them?
Yeah, you can request an extension, that's another choice, but if they don't want the extension, there's something, we still need to happen on this.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking that from now until Monday, that doesn't give them a whole lot of time either.
Could we put in the letter, Norm, Sean, to your motion, a continuance for a special meeting on Monday, with an addition to the letter asking the applicant for an extension, so we can, uh, have a discussion about this with them, in a, in a more reasonable time amount?
Yes, so moved. I'm all for trying to work with the applicant. I mean, I hate to hold anybody up that believes people have a right to build, but it, we have to follow the rules and regulations that are set forth before us.
And that's one reason why I, I said, you know, town council, it'd be nice to have a letter from her, as such, stating that, because that covers our...
But once again, ConCon's not gonna weigh in on the quality of the wetlands, and whether or not there's physical access, that's beyond their purview. Their purview is here in terms of how to analyze.
What, what we are, what we are giving the applicant, I guess, time to do is to either say, "We'll modify the plan somehow", you know, eliminate a couple of lots, maybe something like that, or provide evidence that there is indeed access.
Yeah, I just, again, a- and I'm fine with that. My problem is, is I'm letting Lot Four slide on something that I thought we made it clear to the, to the designer of this plan in the previous year that we don't want anymore. And, um, again, it's just my opinion, um, I just, you know... I don't know how, Norm, you put, you, you did a great thing, you put the letter out on the web for all of anybody who building in Rutland understands our position. And here we get this in front of us, and it makes me mad. And that's all I could say, I'm frustrated because this isn't, how do I say this? This isn't surprise, thanks, Sean, surprised anybody, we've let it be known. True.
Yeah, a- and I, I'm surprised that the, uh...
I just, I just reached out.
That needs is... It doesn't understand this because it was their property that set precedent to our decisions.
And I know that's a side note, I guess, I think I, I liked what Sean's motion and the addition is, so...
Okay, so... Uh, I guess, uh, next question, Tamika, have you gotten all this down?
Um, so far, I have a motion to continue the A and R to August Third with their request to the applicant for an extension for further discussion, is that correct?
Yes.
Or for the applicant to come forth with information that would say there's no issue here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call low. Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm? Aye.
All right, we'll schedule a special meeting tomorrow, uh, for the Third.
And then, can we get an email out to them tomorrow morning, first thing?
Notify them of the outcome of tonight's...
Do we have to do a written one, is that, is that procedure to give them a written notification too, or is an email good enough?
I will.
It should be followed up with a written.
Yeah, that's what, I just want to make sure we dot the i's and cross the p's.
What I'll do is I'll send a letter two ways, by email and by standard mail. I'll send it by email, the letter scanned, and send it that way.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Okay, next item. Uh, Maple Hill subdivision updates. Yeah, I don't remember if we even have anything on.
Didn't Kevin did some, he did some, uh, what you can, saw him paving it, it's not a memory, Steve.
It's all, it's all paved for base coat, and, uh...
David, you put in the package all of the, uh, Yankee, uh, documentation all right there? Yep. Yep.
Very impressed, I went down there and took a look at it, very impressed with it.
Yeah. I drove by it too, Dick, they did a good job.
Yeah. Number Five?
Lot Was number Five. Uh, number Six, Rice Lemon. I don't see anything.
I didn't see anything on that today.
There was nothing that we received, that's, there was a placeholder, should we get anything on a timely basis?
Okay, and, um...
Did we hear anything back? Okay, I'm sorry, Dick.
Excuse me a second, but, um, when I came in and talked to you two, that was last week, wasn't it? I, I went down there anyways, had a discussion, a, a, a very good discussion with, uh, Tom Lassen, who, who runs the contract, the, the construction stuff down there.
Yeah, yeah, sure, please.
And, uh, my biggest thing was the rail trail, and, um, he got one load of stuff in there, you know, that he's gonna reshape the beginning of the rail trail to get it around the pond and all that. And I asked him, "When is it going to be done?" I says, "Can we have a date roughly?", and he's, he told me, "Three weeks."
Okay.
So, I'm thinking sometime in August, it, it, it should be, cause, but...
There was another thing, I saw an email from our attorney on the addition and deletions of open space, I think that was an email or something?
Yes, that is correct.
H O A, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, and again, this is something I haven't had a chance to look into, is there enough open space by the bylaw that we could take that, those detention ponds out? And, and give them to the town? That was, I guess, where I came out, that was, that's, out of what David said, that was gonna be my question, can we do that?
Well, there's a procedural aspect that supersedes that discussion. Maybe Norm, you want to...
Okay.
But there was an over, uh, the amount of open space.
They were over the, they're over, okay.
Yeah, way over.
And I read the, it didn't seem like that was going to be an easy task to do.
No.
Thank you, Dave.
I know I have that here. I printed it out.
Are you, you'll find that in the supplemental information.
What the Amy thing here?
Yeah. I know I have it.
Uh, yeah, that was an email that came in. I read.
As I read what she was saying is that whatever can be done basically has to be initiated by the owner of the property.
So we had talked to Cleve. But before we would do that, we would need to get Chief Buckley's buy-in that he wants it.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that would really be a problem.
No, I know, but I, me personally, I want to have him in this discussion to make sure. You know, we, I don't want to go through this whole rigmarole and him like, we don't want it. Or I don't want to set precedent by this being the first one. Now, my discussion with him on the side, he didn't seem to have a negative, because I asked him about this on a, just a one-on-one. And he didn't seem to have an issue with doing it.
Yeah.
So.
Like I say, I don't, I don't think that.
But it wasn't official, so that's the reason why I think we should ask him. And then if it's, if he says yes, Norm, I think we should go to Cleve.
Uh. I'm not sure I agree with that.
Okay.
Uh, in Amy's correspondence here, down near the bottom of the first page.
Yeah.
Actually, the, the next to the last paragraph. It says, my advice to the board is that the party that controls the special permit would have to request a hearing to modify the HOA, blah, 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 and so forth.
Oh, so we'd have to go through the whole hearing process?
Yeah.
Okay, I still think it's not bad.
Not only we have to go through the whole hearing process. He has to request it.
Oh, so Cle would have to request it.
There you go.
Yeah, but that could be some PR for him with his housing people up there.
Yes.
Because the last time I talked to Cle, Norm, it wasn't going well with the, with the owners of his, of his houses now there, so. Word of mouth, word of mouth can be detrimental to future purchasers. I don't know.
I, I don't know. The way I'm the way I'm taking this correspondence. And let me see. There's another page.
There was? I thought there was only two. I think so.
I just, to, to, the process Amy put in place in her paragraph. If we follow that, and yes, it's going to be some pain in the rear end for going through the process, I think it's it, it's a win for the homeowners and if the town's willing to do that, it's sort of setting precedent. So when we have our, our, our meeting to redo the, uh, or look at the subdivision bylaw, we could modify the HOA requirements in there because we've got a precedent set with this. That's what I'm looking for, this subdivision.
I don't see how we can initiate it.
Have a discussion with Cle? Oh, I see where you're getting at. The homeowners need to initiate this with Cle.
Yes.
Okay, I see where you were leading me and this horse wasn't going towards the water.
So. And, and you know, just, just, and this is kind of an aside thought. That. Uh. How do I want to put it? Not just, well, be blunt about it. Cle's all about money.
Okay. And we're about enforcing the rules and that's the orders of conditions.
And change like this for him to go ahead and initiate it is going to cost him some bucks. He's going to have to provide new plans. Okay, showing that, for example, those detention ponds are actually within the taking of the roadways. He is going to have to modify the trust document. And somewhere in the title of each one of the houses he sold, there is a reference to that. Those will probably have to be redone.
I bet they're, and again, I don't know, but I bet their deeds just re-offerenced the HOA. So if he recorded a revision of the HOA with the registry of deeds, that should supersede the reference on their deed. And again, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know that.
Well, that I don't know.
Yeah. I've just done that before when we've revised plans and we had them called out on a legal document as long as we didn't put in the legal document Rev 1 and just put the document. The latest rev is, uh, the attorney said the latest rev is the overriding document.
Yeah.
Again, that was in, in engineering world. I don't know in house world what that means. So do we convey this? Because I don't think there's anybody on from, uh, the subdivision. Is that correct?
Tim, I believe Sean Mead is here.
There's a couple of people on right now.
Okay, so do we? It's, this is, I guess, our determination? Have them discussed this with Cle?
That's the way I see it.
Okay, I'm with you, Norm. No, no, I agree with you because we've already issued orders of condition and that's what we need to enforce. We've got a plan. We need to enforce that. This is a modification to a plan that we've already approved and.
That, that, that's, that's the whole point right there.
And, and we're not initiating this modification. So, I mean, because the, the plan right now and the HOA conformed to our bylaw. So.
In the future, we need to do.
I get it.
What we're trying to do now.
A business meeting would fix this.
Yes.
Or I shouldn't say fix it. It would, it would initiate change.
Yes.
I, I guess. As part of the minutes, do we, we don't need a motion or anything like that. It's just.
Uh, no, but if we have some people online, is there anybody out there from the public that, uh?
There's a couple, there's at least one person. I don't recognize the second name here.
Public comment, maybe?
My name's Sean Mead from 73 Woodside. Um, I guess the next question would be, what happens when the town takes it over? Is it an easier process then for you guys to make that change? Or is that something as a homeowners association, once it really goes into effect, for us to do it without involving Cle or putting that up to him? Because.
You gotta do it now.
As I see it, the plans would be closed, everything would be done and off of him and on to the homeowners association.
There, there will be no mechanism for us to do anything once the subdivision.
Once that road gets accepted. It's off the table then because you got to have it, you'd have to do a petition, you'd have to bring it to the town. You'd have to have a town meeting. That's a tough process to go through. Right now is the time to do it before the road's accepted. Tell me if I'm wrong, but I think this is, if you, if the homeowners are going to do something, they should do it before the road gets accepted and it goes to town meeting.
Right.
Now, the last time I had a discussion with Mike Nicholson about this, and I know he's gone now. He said that it would be an easier process after it was done to petition the town to take over that section of land.
Wow.
Yep, but from a legal standpoint, Norman and David and the rest of the board. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but that just seems to me like it'd be more difficult because the homeowner's in place, the deed's in place. Plans are in place, the as-built are done, the road's accepted by the town. Modifying all those documents seems like a huge process and a costly process to do.
Well, well, that's, I think you get the other side of it is that you know, there would have to be new official plans filed. And if the town has already accepted, that would, that cost would fall to the town.
But yeah.
Yeah, I'm not cool with that. I just gave Chief Buckley a, a, a poison pill of money to do. I don't know. I don't have a good answer.
I, I don't, I don't have an answer necessarily for that. I don't see that being a viable way of doing it.
I'm with you, Norm, because I get, if Mike's looking, and I apologize, I'm putting words in Mike's mouth because I wasn't with him at this meeting. But at the, at the high level, that seems easy to do, but in the minutia, this seems like that is a lot of work that is going to fall on the town and on the homeowners and on deeds are going to have to be modified. The town's not going to pay for that. So the homeowners are going to have to have their deeds modified for homeowners agreements. I know it's quick deeds. I don't know how much those cost, but still, it seems like if it's, if, if it's going to get done, me personally, again, this is my opinion. I, I would have the homeowners initiated with Cle now before that road gets accepted.
Just to jump in, something else that would have to happen, there would probably have to be a new hearing on the subdivision itself. Because the open space calculations reside on the subdivision plans, that this would be a major modification of the subdivision.
Correct.
Not just reopen special permit proceed, but also the subdivision proceed.
It's, to David's point, it sounds like it's messy no matter what. But.
But the end result. As messy it can be right now, the end result would be great.
Well, yeah, the end result gives us a, a leg to stand on for our business meeting for modifying the subdivision.
And also takes the responsibility away from the homeowners association to the people down there.
I don't think, I don't think we need an extra leg to stand on to change that for the future.
No, 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 but, but we've got a precedent at least that, uh, when I say that, I mean, we've got the chief's buy-in that he's okay with it, so. You know, when we start modifying this, we don't have to go back and ask everybody because they're okay with it because they've done it already once. Well, I think this is sort of, to Norm's point, we've given the advice to a couple homeowners here on the.
I think it's a good idea, you gentlemen and ladies, to kick it in gear and go see Cle.
So I'm talking to Cle and moving forward. What else is done or needs to be done for the subdivision to be accepted? Kind of like a timeframe that we have to work with for that.
The road is the first thing, right?
It, it's possible that he could petition the town at Fall Town Meeting. Uh.
This is July.
Obviously, he doesn't have the final code of paving it.
Is that modification made to that? Uh, that wall that went around?
The wall is, that, that, that has been taken care of.
Okay.
Um.
He could.
They have to provide as-built plans. The as-built plans have to be reviewed and, and accepted by, by the board. They had, they have to provide, uh, the layout in, in document form. Um, the, at least as far as I am concerned, the entrance to the rail trail has to be complete and usable.
And you said August, Dick? Before that'll be.
Yeah.
September or October. So he's got about 12 weeks then. Because don't we usually have a, in November, we have a special town meeting?
I think it's November.
So that gives him 12 weeks to do everything.
It, you know, it's, it's very possible. And, and, you know, if you were to look at it from Cle's point of view, he doesn't want to have to plow that this winter.
Yeah.
So all the others, the other than catch basins and all that have to be drained clean.
Yeah.
So I, I guess, Norm, to your point, because of what David said, with all of the hearings that would have to be done to get this done before, if, if Cle was actually going to special town meeting. Somebody needs to get a jump on this now. Because we'd have to schedule, uh, public hearings. It'd have to be posted, uh, two times in the paper for these hearings. And again, Cle would have to initiate all this because it's not us initiating anything. So that whole process could easily take three months or more.
Oh, yeah, easily.
So, um, again, I, I'm not, this isn't a, I'm not the project manager on this, but I would, I would have discussions with him quickly if I was in homeowner situation. Do we, can we? I guess what I'm saying is this, this letter that we got from Amy. It, it's a good basis for them to have a discussion. Can we share that? Are we allowed to share that?
Holic, holic.
Then I, I wouldn't have a problem. Um, who's on, Mr. Mead, if, if you wanted to come up and, uh, get, uh, this document to have a discussion with Cle or your group. I mean, I I'm looking for some help here.
Yeah, I can, I can do that. Or if Tamika could email it off. I know she has my email, I believe. And then also a couple of other things. Did we find out what holdings process with this is? Did we ever get to the bottom?
No, I got nothing. I, I've got no feedback from any of them. So I'm, I'm actually going to drop it. I've, I've made a total of five calls. I talked to our chief, who was trying to get in touch with them, so. I, I apologize. I'm, if I'm getting no response, I'm sort of giving up. I, I can only make so many phone calls and get no responses, so. And I, and I got our chief involved and Chief Buckley hasn't got any feedback, so.
Okay, and then also I reached out to Dave the other day. Is there a way to get a copy of the stormwater management plan for Bryce Estates? That has, and the maintenance plan for post-construction?
Um.
That should have been part of the submission, the stormwater.
Yeah, it should be there someplace.
Let me ask a question. Would Cle have a PDF of that or a document? Because somebody, because Carl would have had to review that, correct? So we would have sent that to Carl. I say Carl, but Quinn.
And, you know, the thing is, that, that report is.
Oh, I know it is.
Like that thick.
Um.
I have, I have reached out to Quinn Engineering and they did not have a copy of that with the plans or any of the documentation they had. It was
Now I'm getting scared.
Hannigan Engineering firm that had it prior to them for review of the whole project when it got going.
Cullinan?
Cullinan? Did that review? No.
No, can't be Cullinan.
Cullinan's been gone for over six or seven years. Probably longer than that, yeah. You, you've got a good point.
No, it started, it started with an H, I believe. I don't know if it was someone that he had.
It is Hannigan Engineering.
Oh, it is.
It's Ha- Hannigan.
They did the stormwater management review?
That's Cleve's. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, but that document would have had to go onto Quinn for us, our engineer, our engineer to stamp it and give us comment back, right? Because that's always the reports we get. If, if Carl finds something wrong in that storm management.
That, that.
And I use Carl, but I meant.
That's through DPW, right? They're the ones in charge of stormwater management.
Oh, I thought we, I thought our.
It probably been Gary, you know, responsibility. Uh, wait a minute, I think I see an answer coming. Or maybe not. Find out in a second.
Uh, if, through the chair, if I may, Peter Crane again. So the stormwater plan would have been part of the wetlands paperwork that came through. So Concom would have a copy of the version that we issued our original Rice Lemon orders of conditions. But it's really the DEPs because we got a super. There was an appeal of our order of conditions to the DEPs. The DEP took it over, which means that they own all of the wetlands paperwork for the project as a whole. Do I know how to get it out of, out of DEP? I personally have no idea.
Wow.
I have also reached out with them and they couldn't provide any of that information as well. So it got lost in some abyss of a warehouse or something like that. Like they went through several people that have had their hands in this process and none of them could produce that document as well.
But wouldn't the DPW have, have that down there?
The final?
It's, it's hard to say because I don't know that they would get involved. I don't know what, at what stage DPW gets involved in SWF.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think. I think it's very, very, very late in the process. I don't, I don't think. I think it's very, very, very late in the process.
All right.
Because, because other people have to approve it. It's gotta be approved by Concom or DEP.
Yeah.
It has to be as part of the wetlands package. So Hannigan, well, it depends on who did the wetlands work. I know, I know that I've met recently with Hannigan on so, on their most recent wetland stuff. I just don't know how far back that relationship goes. I actually wasn't on Concom when this came through our process, so I and even if I, I'm, I am certain that if we, that if we were given one, which we should have been, that it's up in the top floor of the town hall with the rest of the conservation commission paperwork pile.
Let me ask this, would, should Cleen have a copy of the final finding?
I, either he or his wetland scientist.
Okay. I, I, I guess my, have you, uh, Mr. Reed, have you contacted Mr. Blair about this?
I have not reached out to him in regards to that, that document. I figured through all this process, someone would have a copy of it accessible easily, and that doesn't seem to be the case, so I guess I could reach out to him. And the reason I guess we're looking for that is if post-construction happens and the road gets accepted and we had to maintain that thing, and we can't get it turned over or anything like that, we need some sort of guideline to follow. Make sure it gets cleaned, make sure it's maintained and monitored properly. I know they have to be cleaned bi- biannually, certain things have to be measured and maintained. Without that document, we're kind of back, back to the beginning here where you want these homeowners in charge of this type of structure.
Yeah, I agree. I guess my suggestion would be contact.
Tim, if I may, um, I have a contact with Hannigan Engineering, um, if the board is amenable to it, I can provide that information to Sean, if you would like to reach out to them to see if somebody can delve into their files and see if they have, you know, either a hard copy or an electronic copy.
Yeah, I would copy Norman on that, on that conversation too. Because they, they might want to, uh, get copies in our files, if we get something.
Good idea, Tamika.
Excellent.
Okay, I can, I can do that. I'm happy to do that.
All right.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, that'll be great.
And if it is a, a PDF or whatever, Concom can have one.
We gotta put it in our files.
We'll get one in our files. All right, well. All right, well, it looks to me like you've got your hands full to start with Mr. Blair and get the ball rolling.
Yeah, that way.
Next topic.
All right.
Okay.
We're on first, what's on second? Yeah, okay, next item, is there anything else on Bryce Lemon?
There's no reports, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, yeah, number seven. Notice under chapter sixty-one A program.
Please don't let me get started. I, I presume you heard me on YouTube last night. I am still a, a fit-to-be-tied.
I, I, I was listening.
Okay, good. Sorry, sorry if I overstepped my bounds, Norm, but I was, I was out of control mad. Especially since I went, after we got off that phone call, Norm, and I read CMR. They violated it.
Yeah.
So.
I, I came up this morning to see the chief, and I brought up my copy of the sixty-one A form that I had just dropped off yesterday at the Board of Assessors, and right in there, it says a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
And the chief made a copy, and I says, is there any way you're gonna, you're gonna have to get either an injunction or something to stop what the select board did.
Correct.
So I have not heard anything about what happened from there.
All right, I, I just.
But I.
I guess we need to go through this, and, and at the end of this, I'll, I'll make my comments.
Uh, I don't know, I, I'm just a little bit curious on this one, is there any need for us to issue a statement of interest or no interest in this?
I think we should, that's my opinion.
Yes.
We should at least give it to the select board. I mean, honestly, Norm, I, I agree with the, the comments. As a town, we don't have any interest in this, although last night, I'll be kind of, as I I was gonna find money somewhere and, uh, buy that, uh, give the town money to buy part of that, uh, anyhow, I'll be quiet.
Now, on, on, in my behalf of this, we, we have not issued yet the special permit, but yet everything is done. The driveway is done.
Sprachensie Deutsch?
Yeah, you can say that again. And, and to me, for crying out loud, why, why are things, you know, being pushed like crazy for Christ's sakes? You know, that's why I think she wanted to get rolling, and, you know, she had the already, I, I believe somebody is buying a house or whatever.
I gotta drive over there because.
But here, here's the bottom line. I want to know from the Board of Assessors their findings. On that piece of property, does it rule as being a sixty-one A? Because in my opinion, only, it does not.
Because it's just a small section?
It's a small section, and, uh, what was there a long time ago was, uh, I believe a previous family had it, and it's all grown up now. This is happening in, in a lot of places, and, uh, this is not the first time I've opened my mouth on, on sixty-one A stuff.
Well, and, and I apologize, I haven't been over there.
No, I haven't.
What, what I just heard is, you're telling me that, and again, this is just my comment, that Chief Buckley's issued a driveway opening permit, there's a building permit, and there's no special permit issued? I got a huge problem with the building inspector's office right now. And with the, uh, DPW to issue those without.
We don't know that.
Correct. I'm just saying, I need to go look, and if that's the situation, then I'm gonna have a problem.
Uh, from now on, we're gonna have our meetings here because I tell you, information is coming through this door like you can't believe.
Okay.
So is this the Glenwood Place?
Yes.
Glenwood Place does not have a building permit. It's been requested, and it's been declined by one of the town departments.
Okay, thank you. But if there's a driveway there, then.
But has the driveway permit been pulled? Because the driveway is put in.
That I don't know. I, I, I only know about the, the, what I can see on viewpoint.
Yeah.
On viewpoint today, I saw it was declined.
Let me ask you, Peter, and I apologize, I'm going off in a bit, how does, like, board members like us get access to viewpoint, so I can go look? Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe anybody in the public can create a username and account to access viewpoint. See whatever records exist on viewpoint. I don't think that, especially a thing, whatever or not, it's to the public.
Okay.
Create a username and account.
I didn't know that.
Then you can log in and see what activities that is.
All right, because when I got on there, it looked like I needed to go through the process of, of asking for a permit, and I didn't know.
I wasn't sure if a member of the general public has access to the comments and the decisions of, the detailed comments and the decisions of the people who have input into the building permit.
I don't know that that's the case. I don't believe that that's the case, because those comments are made to the applicant and to the I'm not sure about that. I think the, the comments travel with the permit, so if you did historical research on a permit, you would see the comments, I believe.
Okay, I just wanted, I, I just, it was a curiosity factor, because I, to that point, I would, I wouldn't if I don't get time to drive over because I'm so busy, I could at least go look at the documentation.
If you have the chance to try it, see what happens.
I will, I will feed.
No one, we will find an answer.
Okay.
Get the public on access to.
I started down the path, and it looked like I was applying for a permit, and I go, oh, I'm not going down that path. I don't need to build anything in this town. Good, all right, thanks. But I will drive over there because I'm really curious about that now.
Yeah.
Considering that the special permit hasn't been issued.
Ahead of ourselves, if I might, we have the special permit decisions right here, if we review and sign. And then that'll be distributed to the applicant with a twenty-day appeal period, so the decision's here. Uh, you have the other, chapter sixty-one requires three for Prescott Street and West of Glenwood Place. This is item number nine.
I didn't have a problem with Prescott, I mean.
Prescott.
That's, uh, Jarby's.
I have the biggest problem there.
Okay. I'm listening.
Is anybody thinking about the future? Hey, select board!
They have no money to think about the future, that's a problem.
The SOAR runs down through there. That's also, it runs on Lila Kedge's property, which is APR, which is estate. Right next to it is Kevin Jarby. Now, I know that Skip, Clark, and a bunch of other people looked into about a waste disposal facility. But is anybody thinking forty, fifty, sixty years down the pike here, for crying out loud, which they might have? I found out from Mr. Jordan, they do make a digester for human waste.
Oh, yeah.
And not only that, then, uh, let's see, uh, Holden Trap Rock is where the, uh, gas line ends to extend it out, you can burn.
Talking about my business.
You could burn the rest of it, or you make electricity as, you know, through the digester. But, you know, people are not thinking far enough. And, and so help me, that line is right there before, heads to Holden. And to me, people should be thinking about this and not turn around, okay, let's have some houses. No, let's take a hard look of where the heck we might want to put a facility in years to come. Come on, people, think, think ahead. So therefore, in my opinion, it, the town should be at least one or two lots down there, or who knows?
Can we do that? I mean, can we recommend to the select board that they take a look at? Um, because of the sewer and potential future use of that for the town? I mean, we don't have to, we, it's a recommendation, right?
Yeah, that's all it is.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm with Dick on this. I mean, we're the infrastructure. I mean, we're the roads and, uh, I have no problem. I think it's an excellent idea, Dick. Because, once you get a house, Dick, can you imagine saying, by the way, I'm taking eminent domain of your house to put in a line?
Yeah.
That'll go really well, when the town could have thought about. I'm sorry, Sean, I interrupted you.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, in fact, with eminent domain, it's happened before.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it costs more.
Oh, it does. But I, I, I'm, I'm a medical norm to put a recommendation for the town to look into, um, look at where that, that sewer line goes through and think about purchasing those three properties, because I think if I remember the records, and again, I apologize, running in front of me, they were like eighty-five thousand a property?
Something like that, yes.
So I'm doing my math quick, one seventy, that's quarter of a million dollars. I mean, it's not, it's not small money, but it does have future potential for the town.
That's my opinion. I mean, I, I just, I just don't want to lose an opportunity for the town, uh, to let something slip by. And then down the pike, oh, why the heck didn't we do this?
I, I think it's a great idea to put a recommendation together to the town that they look into purchasing the property for future expansion of our infrastructure.
They have, uh, it's a hundred and twenty days, so they probably still got at least another maybe ninety, another three.
Didn't that come in like June seventeenth?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it came in June seventeenth, I believe.
Can't believe I remember that.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, that was June seventeenth, that's correct.
Okay, I did read it. So.
So they, they, they have a, a little bit of time to think about it, at least.
Yeah, to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
But I, I'm, I, do I need to make a motion?
Yeah.
I, I, uh, make a motion that, uh, we send a recommendation to the select board to look into purchasing those three properties for future town infrastructure.
I'll second that.
You, you wanna? In parentheses, sewer treatment?
No, I don't want, I don't want to give, I would just say future town, um,
services.
Sewer infrastructure. I'll put that.
Yeah. And, and I second that, okay.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Hearing on, let's do a vote. Roll call, Sean.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Norm.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent. Now, the next one's, what?
Revision tracking.
Actually.
Oh, no, we got one more.
There is, there's, I just want to be clear here, that there are three requests for Prescott Street Lot One, Two, and Three. Does a vote just made apply to all three of those?
Yes.
Okay, then there's one, if that's.
We got one more.
Then there's one more request at seven D, known as Lot One, Glenwood Place. There was a total of four sixty-one requests.
Okay, didn't see that, didn't see that at the top of the page.
So that was the, the one up on Glenwood Place, that's about the, the driveway that went in. You're referring to her, that's whom you're referring to there.
Yeah. Um, I don't mind making a motion that.
And I, I, I I believe that the how, how the heck can I, you know, I don't know how to word it. I don't believe that it is a sixty-one piece of property.
I was gonna make a motion that we take no action on it, and I think, is that, we, or we make a
We have no comment.
No comment, yeah, thanks, Norm. We make a motion, no comment on the sixty-one A property at Glenwood Place.
What makes you think it's not?
You have to have, uh, five, you know, the acreage they have.
It's five.
Now, the question is, is how, how, how do they make their money on it? It's not hayable.
It's no logging.
And it's not lo- it's not Florida Street, because they're not in that, uh, sixty-one, um, sixty-one. I can't remember now, sixty-one B, I think is recreation. And, uh, the only thing was, was the Ross family, uh, that had fruit trees in there. But I could not see the orchard.
So, so you're saying that sixty-one A can expire?
Yes.
All by itself.
And seeing as I believe this person just bought the property, so I don't know if they've already filled out the, uh, proper, I just got the, the new form in for twenty twenty-three. Or, yeah, I think it was twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, and, uh.
So if they sent that form in, Dick, and I'm just expanding on what you were saying.
Yeah.
The state would say, you're not sixty-one A.
Correct, and therefore, they would suggest that the Board of Assessors
Pull them from the roll?
Will go out there and make the inspection, if it does follow under sixty-one A.
Okay.
And to me, that's, that, you know, and, and if if I didn't see it correctly, and it does, fine.
The assessors should make the call.
But the assessors should make their call to make sure.
Um, Dick, if I may, I don't know if it makes any difference, but the Board of Assessors did hold a meeting this morning, um, and they did submit, uh, their waiver of no interest, and they're currently, um, she said that they have reached out to, sorry, hold on, I gotta shrink this. That they had reached out to the chapter land specialist to help with the calculation of rollback taxes and liens.
Oh, so it's like twenty percent of the land, they only have to pay rollback taxes, twenty percent of the property taxes, and depending on.
But if it doesn't follow under this.
There is none, yeah.
Yes, uh, uh, okay, so how do we?
I just say we, we have no interest in sending that to them.
Yeah, but how do we, not our business. Well, it was brought before us, misinformed, as far as I'm concerned. I, I, from now on, anytime something like this happens and it comes before the select board, I I want a, a form from the Board of Assessors saying, what is listed here is true. We made an inspection, no, this is not right.
You're talking about a procedure for the town.
Correct.
Sixty-one A, that sounds so great.
Well, yeah, that's wonderful.
Because I, like I say, it happened over on Wachusett Street, Wachusett and Glenwood.
But it's gotta come from the Board of Selectmen because they're the one who initiates all this uh based on what I read last night on CMR, the select board does all the initiation. We, we're basically just the recipients.
Why can't we suggest the, to the select board?
I'm fine with that, send, have a letter, we need a, a tighter procedure.
Tighter procedure, and we want to know if this pro, this piece of property is truly under sixty-one A.
Yeah. And, and to your point, Dick, we got a hundred and twenty days, it's not like this has to be done in twenty-one.
That's correct.
So the re, when it comes into the, the, to, to your point, if, when it comes in the clerk, which I presume it would, you know, get checked in as the, the documents get checked in, the clerk, then Slent the select board. There's no reason they couldn't have a procedure of, okay, it goes here, here, here. Then once we get that procedure back, you know, in two weeks, which is only fourteen days, then we send it out to all the boards for approval. Or dies, basically like a flow chart, if it's not sixty-one A, we tell the applicant it's not sixty-one A. And that's where, we don't even go through the process.
Yeah.
But, and, and again, that comes from the board, I, I don't know the process, so the Board of Assessors are the ones who make the determination for sixty-one A?
Yes, I have to fill out the form and turn it into the Board of Assessors every year for, for my property, so that.
Again, through Norm, I, I think all we should do is, one, to say we have no interest. And two, if we wanna make a suggestion that, to maybe make, to have the Board of Selectmen look into a, a, a process of how they do this, I mean, it's a suggestion, we can't tell them what to do.
Well, no.
But we can suggest to them.
Well, I, I uh, to me, for crying out loud, if it does not fall under, I know it's elected board. But it could uh end up a uh, some kind of a suit. If it's not, not handled correctly.
I mean, I'll make a motion to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen with no interest.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Have any amendments possibly?
Well, to Dick's point, what I was gonna do, Norm, is after we, we pass this, not make it a motion, but a suggestion that we just send the Board of Selectmen a, a letter to, to, to Mika or Dave. Have them send them a letter, make him, suggesting to them. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make this official, you know, like an official, like, funny, we're telling you to do this. Let's just make a friendly suggestion to them that um, to Dick's point, that this might not be sixty-one A. And we should really know that before we go through this whole process of sending it out.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not quite sure about that one.
Yeah, I.
Well, how else you gonna know?
I, I see what you're saying.
We had, it was Helen Bynum's property on Emerald Road. You know, there's a certain amount of acreage there was sixty-one A. What part of the thirty-four acres, or whatever it was acreage there, what part of it was the sixty-one A? Is it the part that was near the road or the part near the back?
This is where my question came up, and maybe Dave, you could help me understand. On A and R lots, are they required to put sixty-one A requirements when they do that? I didn't think, that was my gut, that the answer's not.
Requirements are, as we looked at earlier, whether or not the footage is adequate.
Yep.
In terms of dimensions and access, and whether the lot has sufficient area.
I, and, and I get that for the approval, but usually there's, you know, things that the town requires, like, you know, like a locus, things like that, nothing like that, okay.
It's, it's, they, they're two different processes.
Okay.
One is not dependent on the other, one cannot hold up the other.
Okay.
Ultimately, all processes have to be done before building a cover condition.
Okay.
But the hundred and twenty days, I mean, I think it's only fair before you start going around and having all kinds of special meetings. And then all of a sudden you come up, you know, is this piece of property something you wanna buy or whatever, I, I think the
Yeah.
It should go to, you know, before they come to us or any other board, it should go through the select board to be handled.
The only thing about that is the CMR doesn't require that, it just requires the Board of Selectmen to send it out. And I, I could be quoting wrong, I don't have it in front of me, I just remember, I think I remember it last night, it goes out to the planning board, the Board of Assessors, and it goes out to um, I think it was the Concom, but I'm not sure, I think those three.
Ag Commission.
No, that wasn't in there, that wasn't in the.
We voted on it in the last.
That can be added, I'm fine with that, but the actual law, the CMR law only had those three departments listed.
Because we have the option, the Ag Commission had the option to purchase.
Well, I, I'm fine, I just, I, those three have to be notified, and then within I think it was sixty days, if there's no response after the letter was sent out inside of that one-twenty, it's considered a constructive no. So. Anyhow.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, vote. Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I'll go along with aye, hesitation.
Norm, aye.
Okay, before we move on to the next topic.
Yeah.
This is where my frustration was from last night, and I want some, me personally, I want some action taken against the select board. They took away our ability to do what we just did tonight for the process. As, in, in my opinion, again, I'm not an attorney, they illegally did an approval of a sixty-one A without following the processes set forth by the state. And I'm not looking to turn them into the state, I just think the planning board should send them a letter um, to the effect of you could have possibly set a precedent in this town, which we don't need. Secondly, do you knew, do you do know that you illegally approved a sixty-one A without having the planning board's recommendation? First CMR, and I don't know, I don't have the exact CMR in front of me. But I think we should put them on notice, and, and that's all I wanted to do. Um, but I wanna put it before the board, I didn't write my own letter or call the Ethics Commission or anything like that. I think this is something that could be handled department to department in, in Rutland. But I was quite frustrated that, that happened. Now, I wouldn't have had a problem last night if the chairman would have approved it contingent on planning board comment. That didn't happen, there's my frustration. I would, I, we wouldn't, I wouldn't even be talking about this if that would have been part of the um, approval process. That's it.
Any other comments?
I would say offhand, I'd make a, 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 a motion. Make it a motion, make it a vote. Make it a vote.
All right. I wanna see maybe else's comments before I do anything.
Sean, Marilyn?
I have a, a question, it, was the Board of Assessors or the Concom or any other um, any other information given at that meeting, or were there's a, totally on their own?
If I remember Marilyn in the meeting last night, the only people who had not responded on this particular property was the planning board, and it's because we weren't given it the opportunity to put it on our agenda until after our last meeting.
Tim, if I may, um, the Board of Assessors did not review it until this morning. Um, they were in receipt of um, the AgCom and the Conservation Commission. But they were not with the planning board and um, the Board of Assessors.
I, I, Mika, to your point, if I remember that meeting, cause I was sitting there listening, the exact words I heard either out of a, the select board or somebody was, everybody had approved this except the planning board. And maybe I'm wrong, but I, Norm, you were listening, but you, you remember that?
Sort of remember that, I, you know.
I, I know.
I gotta go back.
Me too, but I, I, that's, that's why I was like, that's why I didn't talk about any other boards, cause I thought I remembered. I knew the, on, on the, the Prescott, there was still people who hadn't commented, I remember that. But I distinctly remember the, somebody mentioning that everybody but the planning, I shouldn't say everybody. All departments had responded with no interest except the planning board, something to that effect. And then uh, uh, the chairman had said, well, if it's, you know, if it's just one board, uh, I'll make a motion to approve. And that's where I'm like, listen, we're one of the three boards you have to get a comment from.
Right, yeah.
So, uh, to, Marilyn, that's what, Tameka just gave me information I didn't, I, I, I didn't hear last night, so now I'm even more frustrated. That they approved it with two or three other boards who hadn't approved it, and two of the three are required by the state.
So maybe we need to uh politely request that they review the process?
Yeah.
Politely, I would.
Yeah, I'm, Marilyn, I'm far from polite these days.
Yes, Tim, I know.
Well, I was trying to be.
Sean, any thoughts? I think he's muted.
Sean, are you muted?
No. No, I, I still have a hard time hearing you guys.
Yeah. It seems to.
I, I agree, send them a letter, tell them they were out of bounds. And, you know, have some more consideration next time, everybody deserves a mulligan.
That's what.
Good, just one, just one though.
Yeah.
That's why I really didn't wanna make a motion, it was more of through the chair.
Well, I think it needs to be a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that uh, we send a letter to the Board of Selectmen that uh, based on current information, you exceeded your mandate by not having a couple of I don't know which ones, cause I don't have the document, but you didn't have the planning board's consideration and possibly other boards in making your decision to approve the sixty-one A uh sign off for uh Glenwood Place.
Yeah.
Cause they had to sign, they had to sign all, there was like five places for the select board to sign off on, basically not that's the word I'm looking for, not wanting to exercise purchasing it. Uh, if anybody can add to it, I'm not, and yeah, please add.
Could you add, would you wanna add something about um, in accordance with state regs?
Yes, thanks Marilyn, that's great, quote the CMR uh, the CMR, and to Dick's point, i- if we've got this in our Rutland bylaws that the Ag Commission has to be involved in um, in this, then add that to it too, just to give them, next time, to, to Sean's point, they get a mulligan this time, but it, it, it could have set precedent, I mean, if we have somebody else come in and say, well, you did this over there, so why don't you just give me a waiver right now? That, that's, that's a tough part I've got, I'm not a, and we all know about people asking for precedents in town, it happens all the time because reference of something in the past.
Tim, just to be clear, do you want the CMR cited in the motion, or are you just saying that you want that in the letter? I just wanna be sure I write the motion.
I would write, let me see if I've got the CMR, I don't know if I've still got it up on my.
Well, the, the mention of that would be in the letter.
Yeah, it would be in the letter, and it's, it's part of the motion, but I don't.
Okay, so I, I can say, um, you know, in accordance with CMR, but not necessarily have to specifically cite that section, correct?
I'm looking right now to see if I can find it.
I believe that would be okay, Tameka. If I may.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go with that then.
Yeah, I was, actually, the only reason I wanted to put it in there, so maybe they could go read it.
Uh, yeah, I was just thinking, will they spend the time to go look it up? I doubt it.
I, I, I mean.
They, they'll ask the chief to go after it, uh-oh, now here comes more information through the door.
It's section eight under general law.
It's Mass General Law, Chapter sixty-one A, Section fourteen.
Thank you.
That defines to whom the letters must be sent, and they weren't. And the initial, as I understand it, the initial
Paperwork?
Paperwork was incorrect and therefore was not valid.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
That, that, that was the original.
Oh, the original.
Went through process to actually, as, as they mentioned last night, it became valid over time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's horrible misrepresentation of what was and was not responsible, but let's not go there now.
Yes. That's it.
Well, thank you, Peter.
And by the way, it's not by law that AgCom, that is policy.
Well, that's policy.
Yes.
How does that get enforced if it's?
It's, it's select board policy, and they can change it anytime they want, so it's just what they've done. Historically, it's any, it's the, the four boards who are supposed to be notified directly by the applicant. And then any other board that has the ability to purchase property, which now includes AgCom and I'm not even sure who else, assessors, just for confirmation, and by the way, the fact that it was no longer used as agricultural does not take it out of sixty-one A. That's hidden in that chapter also, in that section.
Really?
Yes, the change of use does not by itself remove the sixty-one A.
Okay, that's.
Nope, it's right here, it's a paragraph.
Yeah.
It's a second paragraph in here, I'm reading it now. Discontinued shall not in itself for the process be considered a conversion. That's pretty obvious.
It's not until you're selling it to somebody who's not a family member.
But then how do you come up with the money that the Board of Assessors is asking you, the IRS filing? So they know how much money you're making per year, you have to make at least five hundred dollars. So.
But to stop using it as agricultural property, again, means it's no longer used as agriculture, but it does not remove it from sixty-one A classification. Not until you're going to formally, you build a house that's not for uh, in-law or whatever, they're, they're.
Yeah, it's, it's owner, spouse, parent, grand.
Complicated.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
What chapter was it?
It's uh.
Fourteen?
Section fourteen. That's what covers the entire right of first refusal.
Okay.
And Dick, section eight tells you about the conversion, if you wanna look that up under this, chapter sixty-one. It's general law, part one, title nine, chapter sixty-one, and then, like you said, section fourteen, and then section eight's the conversion process.
Okay, I think we still have a motion on the floor, any further discussion?
I, Norm, we had a motion, but we didn't have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, now, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call, vote, Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
I, I guess the only other thing on that is uh, I'm, assuming we can kinda leave it to Dave to at least initially get a framework of the letter.
And a second letter, so there's two letters, the one that's immediate will be taken care of tomorrow, and you're getting it to the.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's primary.
Yeah, I'll probably be looking at touch base with guys from language, I'll come up with a markup and then.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need that out tomorrow or anything, I just, I wanna, we just need to work on, it's the one getting them saying that we're refusing. Get it in their hands.
Maybe we can work together, I can circulate a draft.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
And maybe even Tameka has some good ideas too.
Let's send it via singing purrier.
Dick, I think I have the gist of it.
Present it orally at the next meeting.
Yeah. Don't you, I can't sing it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh. Okay, assuming we're done with sixty-one A. Revision tracking is next. Fruit.
I'm sorry.
We have the latest and greatest. uh, on this document.
Now, the question is, will it be done?
Well, we simply don't accept it.
The thing if we don't, or.
If, if they say they're going to revise something, the first thing we ask for is.
Yeah, how do we, Norm, that, that, I, I like that we've got that. But since we haven't had a business meeting, how do we get that out to the builders that this is our standard going forward from, I don't know, August first, figure date? How do we do that? Because I think to, to David's point, there's, you know, bylaws and then there's procedures that we're asking for. So, I mean, that's what I'm struggling with is how do we get that into play to all the builders other than sending them an email saying, this is the, this is the new law of the land for the planning board for your drawings?
It's our new policy.
Okay.
Uh, and it would need to be prefaced with, with, you know, somewhat, something like an introduction, you know, effective as of this date.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, any revisions on any active, uh, applied for or approved subdivisions.
Will follow this? Oh, I'm good with that.
The following guidelines.
Excellent, I'm good. Do we need a motion to implement this policy?
I would say yes.
I have a question before that though.
Yep.
Going back to the original form, this has kind of been in the back of my mind because coming from medical paperwork, you always have the, uh, the date and the revision number in, you know, in the same place, whether, you know, on the same side of the page to, you know, together so that you can very easily correlate one to the other. And in the original form, it's, uh, the revision number, the description of the revision and then the, uh, date of the revision. I'm just suggesting that the date come after the revision number.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I usually, the only reason, I, I think the way Marilyn, the way Kevin did it in the engineering world, you usually put the revision number, the description, and then you put a signature, and then after the signature is the date.
The date, okay, that's fine, because I mean, as I say, I'm from the medical background, so.
So in, in the engineering world, they do that because a lot of times draftsman will do the, the revisions and they'll put the description of it, but it doesn't get signed off.
Hmm, I see.
The engineer or the PE until a later date. That's the reason why they do that, because the signature typically with the date is where they sign it off.
Okay, I figured there might be a good reason.
Am I correct in that? I mean, you've seen that too.
I think you're, what you're describing sounds accurate in terms of the construction trades as well.
Okay, all right.
And I meant, that's logical. I, I had no problem with that explanation.
So we make a motion to implement revision, planning board revision policy as of, I mean, do you guys want to do August first? That's next, or you want to do September first? I mean, you guys, you, the board, tell me what you want to do. I'm fine with August first.
I'm agreed with August first.
Yeah, August first sounds reasonable.
All right, I mean, that's Sa- Saturday, so. All right, I make a motion that, uh, we implement the drawing revision control policy as of August first and inform, uh, existing applicants and put it on our website. I mean, maybe I shouldn't do the website.
Uh, that doesn't sound like a bad idea to me.
Okay, and put it on the website.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
I'll suck around.
Okay, discussion. I just have one sort of question, and, and I, I don't know, maybe I'm backing into the wrong tree. The third bullet is says when a revision is made to any sheet in the plan set, the revision must be done, denoted on all sheets in the stack.
That's just, what happens is, so the revisions are through, if you got twenty drawings, you, y- y- you put a revision number one because that revision number should, you shouldn't do revisions for individual sheets. Sheets, you do, we used to do, when we do a revision, we revise all drawings. Now that, that, what's the word I'm looking for? That triangle will be next to the revision where it happens. But that way you don't end up, I mean, some, some companies do it where you've got ten drawings in a set and you've got twelve different revisions for each drawing. That's tough to follow. I, I like what Kevin came up with. Just revise the whole set. So we've got, so you don't have, if somebody mixes a setup and two drawings, a rev two, one drawings, which ones, which one do I have?
I, I'm just. I, I like the idea, particularly, you know, you have to get a new set of plans.
Yes.
Okay, one I am just kind of wondering is, I'm just going to take, for example, Bryce Lemon. Uh, that set of plans is, how many sheets?
Uh, thirty-five at least, if not more.
Okay, so. And the subdivision has been in progress for
X number of years.
Two thousand five or something.
Years. Uh, all I'm saying is, it almost seems like you could end up with on every sheet, a block this big.
No, because what, well, that, that's a possibility, yeah, it is, but to, to.
And nothing is wrong, just.
Well, I, I like Kevin's thing, which, which we don't do typically in the engineering world, is you have a one page that has the detailed revisions on it. I love that. If I was still working at Riley, I'd probably go try to implement that, but, um, and then typically in the bottom, like in the bottom section where they have the revisions, you just put a little detail. Uh, you could even say, see revision page, blah, 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 or, or this page. And yeah, I've, I've worked on jobs that lasted seven years that the revision page was the whole side of the drawing.
Yeah.
It is what it is. I mean, I.
It's, it's okay, it's just.
I get it, but with this implementation, we're, we're, we're sort of, with Bryce Lemon being a good example, we're forcing them to bring the drawings up to, so Dave, in your package, you've got one set that we know as of September twenty twenty, that's the drawing package we use. And with any future ones, we'll always know, because I know we've struggled with trying to, well, which version do we have? And, and this sort of puts them on notice that we're getting, we're getting organized, that we're going to have to do this.
I fully, I fully agree.
And I like Kevin's suggestion with that revision page, because if Dave has to go looking for something or something like that, there's one page at the front of this that has detailed revisions, and they could even put in there, page one uh, made changes to water lines. And that's the only revision, but that way it's detailed enough that you can go find it. And you can look for the triangles too. I put that in there because that's something that's just been so effective for me to find revisions on a page.
Yeah.
Is look for a triangle that have the revision number inside it.
Great. Anybody else, any questions, comments? Let's see, we do have a motion on the second, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, roll call vote. Uh. Let's see, who do I want to start with this time? Dick?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Gone.
Sean?
Not there.
He's not on here anymore as a participant. Must have had an internet issue.
Hey, Marilyn?
Aye.
And Norm, aye, that gives us at least four.
Okay. This is just simple majority, right? This isn't a.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm coming back.
I'm keeping an eye on if you make your requests to be readmitted to the meeting.
I gotta say, Norm, I'm having the same thing over in my area. My internet's dropping constantly from Charter.
Oh, we, we've lost, we've lost it a couple of times.
And I'm helping you out because National Grid and I had a discussion. Our whole section over there, and I know I'm off topic and I'm wasting time, but the power is down in the one twelve to one ten range.
Oh, really?
Your compressors on your newer fridges are not going to last, so the grid and I had a discussion and, uh, it's in engineering right now, but it's still dropping on the weekend sometimes. I've seen one oh eight.
Really?
Yeah, I've got a, a monitor on a, uh, from my stereo system.
Yeah.
And when the grid guy came out, he actually put the, the, on my meter, and he goes, you might say one oh eight, but I say one oh five. And I was like, anyhow, sorry, I'm off topic. We need to get that, we need to get this meeting done.
Okay, still don't see Sean.
I do have to agree with what he said about it's harder to hear you guys when you're face to face. You tend to talk over each other a little bit, so.
Okay. Okay, uh, next is Glenwood Road Estate Lot Special Permit Decision, which I believe you all have in your packets. Yeah, let's say I'm looking for a motion to sign the decision.
Okay, I move that we decide decision on the, and I can't have it in front of me, but Glenwood Road Estate Lot.
It's Glenwood Place actually, but it's correct on the decision. We're not on the agenda.
Okay. Second.
Where's, where's the fine? I don't see the fine in here. Well, the road was put in before.
You, you're trying to get me wound up, Mr. Williams. I can see this. Just waiting to see if Sean is coming back or not.
He's back.
He's back?
Yeah, yeah, I just have video on him. I don't know if he's trying to.
Right there, yeah. You there, Sean? No, yeah, no.
He's got a shrunken picture, isn't he?
Yeah. I don't know if he's got problems or what.
It's, uh, there's a red line on his little guy there next to his victor.
Sean? Can you hear me now? Sean? Where are you, Sean?
Speak to us, Sean.
It's weird.
So. Um.
He has the option of calling in on his telephone if need be.
It works, I tried it.
So maybe that's the solution here. I don't, because the information was distributed.
Yeah, Sean, Sean, where are you, Sean?
What's that little red man with the line through it?
It's muted.
Muted.
Okay, I have audio on him now. I asked him mute, okay.
There we go. Sean, can you hear us now?
Can you, okay, can you hear me now?
Yay, finally.
I hate doing this. I really do. I'm on my phone now, so.
Okay.
All right, again, I, I apologize.
Okay, we, we have a motion on, on the floor and seconded to sign the special permit decision for the Glenwood Place. Any discussion, comment?
Nope, it's been stepped through. Excellent.
Is everybody ready to vote?
Can I add a condition that sixty-one A's a, I'm sorry.
Um.
I'm ready to sign, because we've already approved this, correct?
Yeah, we already approved it.
All we got to do is basically.
This, it's the decisions, the, what's written.
Oh, okay.
I'm just wondering if we should have had.
I think we've got, um, David stepped through all of our bylaws, and then in the back, under the, uh, standard conditions, he's, uh, called out the plan, and he said it's one estate lot with a lot access, and it's further subdivided. I think we've got everything for this.
I, I feel that there's something else that should be in there.
What, my young lad is that?
And that is, and I think that we'll pay Dave mileage fee. That from now on, he'll be performing for inspections.
When, for. Now, let's go to the FICOM so I can really get somebody wound up. Let's get buy him a truck.
Marilyn?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
So the original copies here is, we want to sign this after the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get, that'll get me out of.
For all of us that are here, let's make sure we sign, and the remainders of you, uh, at reasonable convenience.
Yeah, I come up tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great. I'll be in the office tomorrow.
Yeah, I can feel. So, uh, what's the, um, future of the meeting? Is it going to be all, all at the library or half and half or, anybody know?
Dave, the last time I heard is we have to continue these Zoom meetings until the state pulls it off. I mean, we can do this, but we still have to do Zooms no matter why.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Something declarative and definitive.
Hasn't come yet.
It hasn't come yet, so this is as best we can do at this point is to have a hybrid type of meeting with four members who are comfortable attending in a socially, uh, distance manner such as we have here tonight, with the public knocking a lot in, uh, but available, uh, to attend the meetings through remote means that we have here.
So.
Uh. Personally, I, I like it. I like being in the same room. It makes it much better.
Uh, I, I have to, you know, certainly agree, uh, but one, once again, um, and, and I'm just noticing, you know, that Marilyn and Sean, you decided to, uh, uh, participate remotely a- and that should make no difference. Uh, you know, i- if that is your choice, that, that is absolutely fine, absolutely acceptable, and and, uh, ne- needs to be one hundred percent honored. needs to be one hundred percent honored.
Oh, yeah. Safety first.
Yeah.
The reason, actually, you know, the reason that I didn't get there tonight was really not so much in concern of the virus, except that I'd been out all day and it was so hot. I was
Yes.
It was more not feeling well from being so hot than I would prefer to be in the same room.
Yeah, well. Like Sean?
Yeah, with, with with my connection problems, I would prefer to be in the same room. It just, you know, with, with the town cover, if you know, I go to a meeting and then test positive for COVID and die, will the town be responsible for taking care of my kids?
I don't think so.
Sure. Deveraux's got openings. I'm just being part of like, don't take
I'm about to send them there today.
No, I believe a hundred and ten percent, and we've even got this EverSource is adamant about it. If, if you feel that you need to wear a face mask in the field at a construction site, nobody will say a word to you about it because if we have to get up to next to you to listen, that's not a problem. Safety first.
Yeah.
This virus is not something to play with.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the only other thing I'll bring up is that, uh, it would not surprise me, but, but as time goes on, there may be other people looking to use this room. And there could be some competition.
Yep.
Okay.
If that's the case, then the select, the select in this meeting room will be available for this type of meeting.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I, I have some conflicting information that it is very possible that if you go by what the state is requiring per square footage per person, the select room would not be big enough for us.
Really?
Okay. Yeah, whi- which is weird.
I thought it was.
It's forty percent of the capacity.
Well,
That's the first rule, then there's a distance.
Yeah, and there's distance and there is apparently the square footage.
I'm being, I'm being, uh
Information is coming.
Yes, here, here comes the information. Mister Inform.
According to Governor Baker's latest rulings, uh, there is actually there, there are two causally conflicting standards you can use. The one that they're using upstairs at the library is forty percent of capacity. It is my interpretation that the, that when you get to an enclosed room, you are actually, there, there's a different limitation of eight people per thousand square feet of space. Which is what I assume they mean in cer- in a room like that, which would only support depending upon how you cut the integer, four or five people total in the BOS room. In this room, it's twelve people. Which is clearly much less than forty percent of capacity. That room is rated for sixty people. Even though you couldn't possibly fit sixty people in that room. And I haven't even seen
I wonder what this one is over here.
Smaller.
It's smaller, okay.
Yeah, it's smaller than either of those, than, than Blair or BO.
It just seems easy because you can put one in here, one at the other, in this room, and then one on the sides, and there's four people. But that, you're probably right. Peter, it's probably less than four people in that room.
Anyway, I'm just gonna suggest that, you know, as much as possible, we, we do hold in-person meetings.
So why don't we book this out till September? Two months worth of bookings. Okay, December's good.
I would do through the end of the year, quite honestly.
Can we have Tamika book this through the end of the year for all of our meetings?
I would actually do that through the, uh, town administration's office.
Okay.
Library director.
All right.
And then the, the, the census workers are using this sometime in August. I don't remember the dates. So I, I, so if it's right, there will sometimes be conflicts for this room. Uh, but usually the first people will get approved are the people who live.
But the other room is available.
The other room is, is greater availability. The only question is exactly how many people live. And actually it is easy enough to remove chairs from that room and fit this entire board in that room appropriately distant in my opinion. And there's a question whether it violates the rule or the spirit of one of those metrics that they use for space. Somebody else can make that decision about my pay grade.
Good question. So does the select in this meeting room have this type of setup with the projector?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, and I find that should be very, very helpful and useful.
Oh, yeah.
To see what's on the screen and to be able to talk back and forth.
We're elected a board, let's overrule the governor. Okay.
I'm walking out now.
Just hit the pause, would you, quick? All right. Yeah, I agree, Norm. Th- these in-person meetings are so much to me better. So.
Yeah.
But again, I, I agree. It, it's safety first. That's the most important thing.
So.
What else do we have on the docket? We gotta
We have number ten. Planning Board Reorganization. Anybody, any thoughts, questions, comments?
Well, considering I'm the vice chairman or whatever my title is, nobody ever asks me to do anything. I'd be happy to volunteer to be that position again.
Yeah.
We need someone to nominate.
I, uh, well, let's do the chairman first, right?
Yeah.
Walk down. I nominate, uh, oh, um, Norm Anderson as chairman of the planning board.
I second it.
Uh, question, comment?
Do you accept?
Not. Is he also the chairman of the Ad-Hoc Committee?
No. I, I, uh, I don't know, I'll just comment, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to remain as chairman. Uh, however, if anybody else is really interested in the job or someone feels that there just needs to be a change, have at it.
I would I, I go along with Norm being a chair. I would like to, um, see other people start learning a little bit more.
I was gonna ask, Norm, now that I'm out of my nightmarish, uh, twenty-six-year addiction, and I actually have an eight to five forty-hour a week job that requires traveling three states, and I've got five years left on my prison sentence, um, I wouldn't mind working with you this year and start learning something.
I don't know if there's much I can teach you.
No, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, of interaction with like the town.
Yeah.
With the, with the departments and stuff that I have. And, and the TA, the new, whatever TA comes in, or how that's gonna work out. You know?
You know, I, I, I'm used to a lot of things, but to be, to be very, very honest with you, since we've gotten Dave here, uh, he has taken on I'm gonna say ninety percent of that responsibility.
Hey, start asking for a raise.
And certainly doing a much better job than I ever did. So, uh
I appreciate you saying that. Thank you.
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to I love what you wanna say. Teach, give advice, give guidance.
Yeah, yeah.
In, in any way I can.
I mean, honestly, you two are my s- I'm looking at it as the, uh, young lieutenant and, uh, the two sergeants keeping you from getting fragged in Vietnam.
And I'm still Louis private right here, so.
So, yeah. Although I just got appointed to take over the at law, or the empty slot in the RDIC. There was an empty slot. And my wife asked me do that, and I said, sure, if, if there's an empty slot, I'll I was always on the HPDD, so I said, I'll step into that and I guess I got nominated and I went and got sworn in, so I don't know what kind of time that's gonna take with, I hear there's three RFPs in and there's problems with the solar fields and all that stuff, so feeling that's gonna take a little bit of my time. Can't have that anymore. I can't, that's one thing I've gotta tell. Mike, I can't do that.
We, we haven't been doing that.
Okay.
It's in the afternoon, the evening.
Yeah, e- even early evening, I'm fine because I, I'm at a working, I mean, I've been at job sites and tonight was ridiculous, but typically I'm at home now. EverSource won't open their offices till October. So we're locked out until October at least, so. Anyhow.
I, I just feel that, you know, it's starting to get back together again, you know, and starting to get the normal, hopefully, that we'll be able to, uh, get into regs and other things like that. And that's how we learn is by doing that kind of stuff. And we, we need to, we need to do that badly. I mean, I, to be honest with you, I, has it been three years that you've been here now or almost three years?
Almost two.
Two years? Why does it seem like three? Virusing.
Because we kept him busy and he doesn't sleep at night.
Yeah.
Thinking about all the fun he's doing here.
Yeah. So I, I, I feel that, um, we just we just need to do the regulations, the subdivision regulations.
To your point, Dick, I'm, I'm, I'm fearful that with this COVID and, and I, I'm not saying this because I, I like COVID, but it's given us the pause because I felt we were getting ready before COVID to start the building wave. And I don't think we're ready for it because we haven't had a chance to review our regs, our subdivision bylaws and see how we can improve those. Um, you know, there's just some things that we need to get taken care of, so maybe this COVID's given us a pause that we can do that. I don't know.
Somewhat, but I think it's also paused us.
Yeah, I know. That's the problem. We're doing the Zooms. We need a business meeting and we were gonna do it in April, and of course that all went to hell in a handbasket.
Yeah.
I think also, just to break it on this, at a certain point, it was a regular standing item if there was a light meeting to try to tackle, but sometimes you think it's a light meeting, but it doesn't turn out to be it.
Yeah, exactly.
And, you know, considering we're at nine o'clock.
Yeah, I know.
You know? Uh, anyway, do we, we need a vote on that?
We had a motion and a second.
And
Did you accept? That's the big thing, that every time somebody's given an office when I've been in, we gotta get the person to, to accept.
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll
Excellent.
Okay, I guess roll call vote. Again, Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim?
I live close, so I might have to abstain because of, uh, my, I.
Do you think I should abstain?
No.
No, you can vote for yourself. They do it.
You're voting for Marilyn, too.
The president votes for himself, I mean.
All right. Very good.
Okay. Um, CMRPC.
Oh, we gotta do vice chair.
Oh, vice chair.
I thought we didn't we do Marilyn?
She didn't do, or she?
No, I, I went, I wanted to go in order, do the chair, then the vice chair.
So, Marilyn?
And I would be happy to have more responsibility.
Okay, that's good.
Oh. I'll make a motion to make Marilyn vice chair.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote. Once again, Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Aye. Tim?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
And what about the secretary? We gotta nominate her or?
I'm sorry, I missed who seconded for Marilyn.
I did.
Okay, thanks, Dick.
I just thought if we had somebody else, we might wanna put somebody else on the table.
It's not, if I could, it's not the rep, it's the, the form that has to go back to the register of deeds indicating what the current membership is.
Well, no, I'm just saying in
We've got another
Reorganization. We normally
Yes, I, yes, you're right. I think that was done last night with Dick Williams being appointed. You know, that decision was already made.
That, that was already made.
With Dick Williams
Yeah.
As the alternate by the board sometime ago. I don't remember exactly when.
Okay, okay.
No, they, they sent us a letter asking who our rep was, and at, at that time, they nominated the young lad and then, uh, he got voted in.
So it's current.
Yes, this was only it was before COVID, so it was like February?
Yeah, it was in February. Something like that, January, February, yes, and I'm the delegate.
So your prison sentence still has another seven months of concurrent time?
Yeah.
And the alternate delegate is appointed by the select board.
And that's Sean.
And that was done last night.
Then we got the important thing of signing that piece of paper by the registrar for our signatures.
What's that kind of, is, you talk about, uh, due process and all that sort of thing. Uh, because last night, I was reappointed to the solar committee. As were you.
Oh, okay, wow.
And nobody ever asked me.
I never heard.
You're kidding? So you didn't get a I mean, I, for the RDIC, I was requested to send a letter to the board to select me.
Oh, yeah. And my wife was reappointed to the cultural council. And she hadn't yet sent in her you know, yes or no response.
Wow. That's, that's yeah. I'll leave that one alone.
Point of interest.
Yeah, on the spreadsheet, it said that she's gonna get back by date certain, like this Friday or something.
Yeah.
Someone was on the spreadsheet, doesn't know.
Oh, yeah. By this Friday?
Yeah.
And they voted yes.
Wow.
Oh, boy.
All right, so, uh
What else we got left?
The, uh, district
Start?
Form for
I have the original copy.
We want
That's the one we gotta sign tonight, correct?
So when Marilyn and Sean show up to, uh, sign the other thing, they can sign that at the same time.
Right.
And just a reminder, there are two places that you have to sign. One is for, I don't know, subdivisions and one is A and R's or something like that.
Yeah, one is the general membership. And then the second section is the authorized agent signing for approval not required.
Yeah.
All right.
And item number twelve, old business.
I got my old business out earlier on. I just, like I said, frustration.
Hearing none, I will entertain my motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay.
All right.
Roll call. Uh, Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.